Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of January 4th, 2017. We're going to start off, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance, but we're going to be led by Portsmouth Troop One Boy Scouts. If you could come up. We are transcending town lines here this evening. Let's follow their lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job, gentlemen. Excellent job, you guys.
Before we get to the regular meeting, this is kind of the fun part of the job that we all have every once in a while. And in front of me, I have a citation for a gentleman who has worked for the town and will be retiring, but he's worked for the town for 30 years. He's been a valued employee of our Department of Public Works. He's been a recycling driver for 25 years, making him the town's longest-serving recycling driver. 25 years, I haven't done anything for 25, so congratulations on that. It's a good thing he's here tonight, because he's also has been experienced packer driver, laborer, and has faithfully supported, check this one out, faithfully supported the annual Fourth of July celebration for 29 years. So that's another clean round of applause for him. So, who am I speaking of? I'm speaking of Manuel, and his friend's calling Manny, Menaziz. Manny, if you could come up. I know the administrator would like to say a couple of things, and certainly our Director of Public Works, Kevin McBride, would also, too.
Maybe, Director, you want to come up with us? You will start with, you have a couple of words?
Sure. You know, I think the Council President highlighted a few things about Manny, but one thing that a lot of people don't realize about Manny is his bubbly personality. And I've told the new town administrator and most people that I've associated with that Manny is the type of guy who constantly is smiling and laughing, and this is true even when he come in my office and he was angry about something. He sat down and he started laughing, just like that, but he was really upset about something. So that kind of diffused the whole problem, and quite frankly, it's a great way to go through life, you know? So, you know, we look at Manny, and there'll be times, guys will tell you, that Manny has a responsibility for plowing some downtown streets. Be looking for him in the middle of the night, can't find him. Where is Manny? Manny, where are you? He has no idea. You turn around, and his streets are done. How he gets it done, we haven't figured that out yet. Almost 30 years' worth. But, you know, he's a dedicated employee, who's done a lot of things for this town, worked a lot of extra hours, and his heart and soul are with the town of Bristol, and I don't know how I could summarize it any better. But Manny's done so many great things for us. Driving a recycle truck for 25-plus years, I will tell you, is an insurmountable task that many guys won't even take that job today. And that's the truth. And I would probably go so far as he may be the longest-standing recycle driver in the state since we instituted the program, and I think some of the guys here that work with him would probably agree to that. Well-known out at the Round Resource Recovery in Johnston, and I'm sure they've had a few laughs with Manny as well. We are sorely going to miss him. We really, really will. But, you know, there comes a time in everybody's life when they recognize the fact that, "I want to spend the rest of my life doing something else," and I really had to grab him before he actually retired, which is next week, because I was afraid he'd be in Florida 30 minutes later. So, with that being said, the town administrator. Manny?
Thanks. Thanks. Manny, I think the Director was right on point, and I got to say, I think a smile is contagious. So, I hope you've trained somebody not only to take your place recycling, but also spreading your goodwill in the department. It certainly is important. It's a great honor, okay, for me to award the town coin to you. 30 years ago, you set out to do a job, and you completed it, and you completed it with distinction, okay? Not only did you make the townspeople proud, I'm sure you made your family proud, and you also made me proud, so I appreciate that. The town coin, I checked today with our town treasurer, it isn't real gold. You can bite it and try, but the point is, it's not the value of it, the value you'll take with you, and I hope you look at your 30 years at the Highway Department and have some pride, because you did a good job. But here's the town coin, and on behalf of the town, I wish you the best luck in a healthy and happy future. Thank you.
I'll see you in the morning.
And Manny, if I may, Manny, if I can give you this citation. Manny? Manny's leaving too quickly. You still got a week left? This is signed by myself, Vice Chair Tim Sweeney, Councilman Andy Tiska, Councilperson Mary Perella, Councilman Ed Stewart, our town clerk Lou Shirillo, and Steve Contenti, our town administrator. So congratulations, once again. Come on up, Manny.
We want those snowplow in sequins. Come on.
Thank you, everyone. It's a nice way to start off a meeting.
And I think we should thank the whole Department of Public Works and its director. I know it's a busy season, and we just appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Well put. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, the first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next items are the submission of minutes of previous meetings, Items A, 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is an advertised public hearing. This is to consider the petition of Ben Luke for Bristol Buffet LLC doing business as Bristol Buffet, 180 Mount Hope Avenue, request for a Class BV intoxicating beverage license. You have a recommendation also provided by the town administrator and chief of police in this matter. This is a public hearing.
Okay. So I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Michael Clancy. I'm a former detective with the Warren Police Department, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the pending liquor license for my friends Ben and Sue Luke, who own and operate the restaurant known as the Bristol Buffet. I've personally known Ben and Sue Luke and their families for over 30 years. The Lukes own and operate restaurants in the town of Warren in Bristol, and employ quite a few people. To my knowledge, there's never been any serious police-related incidents at any of their establishments. The Lukes are fine-upstanding, law-abiding, hard-working citizens, unknown for their generosity with various charities. In my opinion, the Lukes are assets to the community who deserve to be granted a complete liquor license in order for their business to operate at their fullest potential. I urge you all to vote in favor of this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second the motion.
This motion is second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is Ordinance 2016-16. This is a second reading for adoption, which effectively creates a new Class BV intoxicating beverage license.
Motion to approve the second reading for adoption.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is Item C2. This is Ordinance 2016-17. This reduces the number of Class BV limited licenses, bringing the number from six to five. This is the first reading.
Motion, this constitutes the first reading.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'm just going to add a little bit of clarity here, just for the public, is that we added a license, we had the open public hearing, so you could speak for or against. We didn't have enough licenses, we just added one as a second reading, and we now are in the process of removing one limited BV license. That was the first reading that you just heard. So at our next meeting, we'll have another hearing for it to remove one of those. We only have as many licenses as we need, is a nice way to put that. So, there was a motion and a second for first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is Item D1, and this is the petition of Ben Luke for Bristol Buffet LLC doing business as Bristol Buffet, 180 Mount Hope Avenue, request council consideration for a Class BV intoxicating beverage license.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant Mr. Luke the license.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for the petition.
Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck.
Next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is the junk and second-hand dealers license renewals for 2017. You have a recommendation provided by the town administrator and chief of police.
With all the approvals of the departments of the administration, police chief, I make a motion, we approve the renewals of 2017 for the junk and second-hand dealers license.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is Item F1. This is the petition of Stephen P. Column, 145 Franklin Street, request council consideration for accessible parking space in front of his residence. This is the second reading for approval. You also have a recommendation provided by the chief of police and the town administrator.
Based on the recommendations, I move to approve the second reading for adoption.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is from my office. We were informed that the space requested previously across from 82 Washington Street, the accessible parking space across from 82 Washington Street, is no longer needed. This is the first reading for the removal of that space.
Make a motion, this constitutes the first reading.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the Public Service Appointment section of your agenda. This is Item G1. For Item G1A, we have the Conservation Commission with term to expire in December of 2019. You have the application of Raymond P. Payson of 131 Ferry Road, who is seeking reappointment.
Make a motion to reappoint Mr. Raymond Payson to the Conservation Commission with a three-year term ending in December 2019.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to say that he has been amazing with Bristol Harbor, and his appointment at the Conservation Commission is well-deserved. He's doing a great job.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is Item G1B. This is the Economic Development Commission, alternate position. This is to fill an unexpired term, which will expire in September of this year. You have the application of Daniel C. Feldman of 46 Seal Island Road, who requests appointment.
Motion to schedule an interview with Mr. Feldman.
Second. There's a motion and a second to schedule an interview. Maybe I can suggest, we have, I believe, three outstanding interviews that need to happen?
Yes.
Is there potential that we could meet maybe an hour before our standard council meeting on the 25th?
You're already doing that.
Well, aren't we just efficient people?
You have a special meeting that night for that proposal.
So I'll work with the clerk and see if we can come out of it for a couple of days.
We'll see if we can come up with something.
Perfect. All right. So, motion and a second to schedule an interview. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the following one is the Harbor Commission Advisory Committee. This is to fill an unexpired term, to expire in August of 2019. You have the application of Robert Breslin of 7 Dana Road, who's interested in appointment.
Move that we set up another interview for Rob Breslin.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I say this every time. We appreciate, this council and the town appreciates the boards and commissions, the time, effort, and energy that you put in to make Bristol a better place. We, and you, and all of us, can't do it alone, but together, we can do it. And we appreciate the time and effort that you put in. So, thank you.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, you have one item under all business this evening. This is Item H1, and this was the request by Councilman Stewart for a status update on the construction easements and final draft of the Tanyaon Brook Phase 2. This was continued from September 28th.
Mr. Administrator, do you want to give us an update on this?
Right on top. Under the table. Thank you. While we're moving along, we had a couple of meetings. One of them was with our Beta Engineering Firm. We have a designated point person, that's Diane Williamson. So if you have any questions, you can ask Diane during the week, or if you can't get a hold of her, please call me. But today, we brought Nicole Ironuzi from Beta here. I'm sure Diane has a couple of things, a couple of updates for you, but the specifics and the details on the project, we thought it'd be a good time to bring the engineer in, to get everything out in the open, and so we all have a clear idea as to when we're planning on breaking ground. But I'm going to turn my comments and ability to express where we're at over to Diane at this time.
Thank you.
Hey, Diane.
Good evening. So, as the town administrator said, we are moving along. There's been a lot of work accomplished. We have the 75% plans completed, the DEM permit has been submitted, and all of the property owners along the corridor have been met with at least once. Many have been met with multiple times. There are 36 property owners, so it's an iterative process back and forth. We have brought all of them up to speed on the project. Some of them, we still have to, I guess, do a little bit more homework with, because they are objecting. We'll work through that, we'll work through their issues with them. None of the easements have been signed yet, so just to let you know that we're still trying to get all of the signatures on the documents. And that's a little bit of the iterative process, because it's back and forth with restoration and things that they want to know about what will happen to their property during the construction and after the construction. We are looking at doing two phases, potentially two phases, making, breaking Phase 2 into two parts, so that we can get the bid out to the streets in January 2018, and shovel in the ground April 2018 is the target. I think breaking it into two phases, we've looked at the budget, that would help the budget, and it will also help with some of the constraints as you go further up towards the reservoir. We've got some tight properties through there, so that will give us a little bit of chance to get those positioned for the work that needs to be done. So that's kind of a nutshell of where we are. I don't know if you have any questions for me, or as was stated, the engineer is here tonight, too.
Of course, I have questions. No, thank you for the update. It's just to convey to the public, this has been going on for quite some time, and I understand the refurbishment and those agreements. We're doing it a different way, this time with Phase 2, so it's not so costly with the overruns at the end with each homeowner. So that's a good thing to do, but it's the timeline, and I know scheduled tentatively was the 2018 mark with our capital projects. And coming up, we have a capital project meeting before the budget. We need to know the finances, and I know back in September, Ms. Agia from Beta Engineering, along with the DEM permits and that timeline, we need to know as a council going forward so we can reach that timeline of 2018 and know all the funding mechanisms, if feasible, is in place, along with all the other projects. So that's why the timeline is crucial, and we have to keep on that timeline and expedite it as soon as possible, so we don't have any setbacks.
Thank you, Councilman Stewart, for keeping a vigil eye on this, and I'm glad we're keeping this on the agenda. Diane, I just had a question, because the longer we're pushing it out, the more expensive it's going to be. If we're going to break it up into the two phases, do we have estimates and an itemized?
Yes.
Okay, there is an itemized detail.
Yes. That's what the engineer has provided us, and that's why we decided to break it off into the two parts.
Okay. I haven't, okay, I haven't seen that, so, all right, great.
And again, that was the important part for our budget planning, is those prices.
Right.
To remind everyone, too, is the bond question that passed in November included $7 million in drainage funds, and part of that $17 million question was for drainage, and this was part of that question. Our hope, and this is more than a hope, but we've had a lot of success being shovel-ready and also having the funds available for matching. So whether it's state or federal funds, we are in a, we set everything up, and the people of Bristol saw fit to vote positively on this, which is wonderful. So when the opportunity presents itself, we'll be able to take advantage of it and leverage our funds. So hopefully, a two-for-one would be wonderful, but we'll take anything that we can get.
Yeah.
Diane, could I ask you, on the splitting the project into two, how are you envisioning that? Are you envisioning like the southern portion of it?
Yes, well, it should be sort of the middle. You did the southern portion.
Well, I know, but I meant the southern part of Phase 2.
So it would go, I think right now, Nicole can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're going to go from the north side of Garfield to Richmond Street as Phase 2A, and then Richmond to the reservoir.
Right. To be construction phases, and a couple of reasons for that was, obviously, the financing of it. It was better for the town to do it in two construction phases. The design will be done from the limits of the whole project, okay? So that design's completed. The DEM permit has been submitted for that entire length, but the construction phasing will encompass several construction seasons through the magnitude of the project. But we felt it was best to do the southern portion up to Richmond Street, the north side of Richmond, and then pick it up on the north side of Richmond to the State Street Reservoir as the Phase 2 construction. So keep in mind, the design is one whole long design, and that permit has already been submitted to the engineer.
So, you would be on this, you would put the RFP out, like the bid documents, next, a year from now, in January-ish, and then you would work, start construction in the spring, which is a long time. And then how, when would you anticipate that phase being done?
I'd have to throw that question to the engineer.
Is she here?
She is. Nicole.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm Nicole Ironuzi with Beta Group. I would think that the construction would be substantially complete in that first construction season. There may be some coming back for the restoration in the following spring.
So as a percentage?
By the fall of 2018? You would start in the spring, and then by the fall, that would be done?
And by the fall, by November, that piece up until Richmond Street should be complete.
If we had done one phase, that wouldn't have been the case, one thing. And looking at the actual positive impacts due to the town to reduce the frequency and magnitude of flooding, that was another reason we did those limits, to pick that up. And then as Diane said, we get into some confined, constrained areas as we work north of Richmond, which we're working through now relative to the right-of-way negotiations. So, no matter what, I don't think we wanted to have that entire stretch opened up, I think it's like 3,000 feet.
Yes, 3,100 feet.
From end to end, under one construction season, and it seems to work best to do it.
So then you would do like the same thing in 2019?
Correct. Right.
I think you would have to be mindful that if you went out that type of length, that if we did get a substantial amount of rain, it could be devastating for those residents in that area of an emergency state of not being, you know, confined, so.
And it is a box culvert that's going in there to go subsurface, so, you know, there's a good deal of work that needs to be done as we move along.
Is there any, is there any irons in the fire, so to speak, as far as grants or funding to match with this, or? I mean, I know there's a lot of talk, you know, nationally and statewide about infrastructure projects, but is there any, like, sense that we would be able to be as lucky as we were with the Phase 1?
We're always searching for grants, and I think that...
No, I know you guys are, yeah.
Yeah, we're always searching, and I think that, you know, the timing was good for the first phase, we were shovel-ready, and when that grant came out, we could jump on it. So I think right now, while we're still searching for grants, we're going to just give them a priority to get the plans shovel-ready, and that would really help us, because a lot of the grants we want to see that you are ready to pull the trigger.
Yeah.
So I think we'll be in good shape if we can get these plans shovel-ready, as I said. And I think if you are aware of any grants out there, if you send them our way, you know, we were really fortunate with the first phase, because we had the flood of 2010, which brought our funding to a halt, which, you don't want to see the flood, but, you know, from that perspective, yeah.
I'll keep my eyes open when I'm looking at the Lego version of this, so.
There you go. Nobody wants to see the flooding. Nobody wants to. But, yeah, well, definitely, I know we had reached out to Senator Reed's office. He had pointed us some grants our way for this project and others. So we'll just keep, we'll just keep, you know, shaking the trees and see what we get.
Is it, I think breaking it up into phases is fantastic. I'm wondering, because this is such an important project to our community, if there's an even further breakup that we can do, or even carve out a piece which is not dependent on easements and property owner permission, so for example, the State Street Reservoir portion, so that we can get going on this even sooner than 2018. Is there any piece of this project that we can get going on this fall, this summer, this fall, this construction season, with the permits being in hand, just to get going on it? Is there any piece that can be carved out, maybe into three phases, for example, or two and a quarter phases, just to make some progress?
Actually, Councilman, that's a great question. And what we did is, by breaking it out into two phases, is the best way to do it, the best way to construct it. The State Street Reservoir portion of it is not part of this project. It is north of the project limits, and it is a separate project altogether for the future. However, anything in between, as you permit these projects, it's permitted from end to end, and when you do drainage improvements, you truthfully want to start at the low end and work to the upper end for drainage and flooding purposes, should you have a flood. So doing an improvement north of where you're actually going to complete the work would only improve the flow in that segment, and then you'd have a constriction in the channel again. So I think sequencing the construction, as you noted, Phase 1 did the southern portion to the outlet into the harbor over here, and then worked north from there to take care of the worst portion of it, and then you start working the segments northbound or upstream, if you will, which is the proper way to do the construction.
Do you have anything to add to that? I look like you were...
I don't. Also, as Kevin had stated, there are 36 residents, so the only portion that really doesn't go through somebody's yard is up near State Street. And then, as Kevin had stated, you wouldn't necessarily start at the upstream end of the drainage improvements, you would start at the downstream, which are all residential.
So, because this has been discussed in the past, of the ideas of the field next to the Department of Public Works for a retaining field, and the downflow from State Street and Mount Hope Avenue of the backflow during torrential rain, and I think, not to put words in your mouth, Councilor Tiska, but, you know, that was a discussion of Phase 3, a potential Phase 3, because of those two roads and the downflow, when we do get torrential rain, a runoff from Medicum Avenue, if there was any more alleviation part of that project with that property next to the reservoir, so.
And again, that was a, that was a separate phase that wasn't part of this Phase 2.
Hey, Julie, I just had a question in regards to the upcoming budget in this project. With that timeline, does that put us in a better situation? It was alluded to that it does, but just wanted to hear from you.
Yeah, so, given the unknowns that we're facing, we have some serious constraints. The nice thing about bringing this into the 2018 spring season is that our, we'd probably be going for a bond issue after the project is starting to get on... be going for a bond issue after the project is starting to get underway, which means, you know, spring, summertime, and the first debt service payments would then likely be due maybe fiscal '19 and then more into fiscal '20. So it gives us a little bit of time to get our ducks in a row and figure out what we can afford. And I know that this is a priority project, so I think that there's not much of a question on whether we want to borrow at some point for it, but it does buy us a little bit of time while we figure out where we are with the litigation and...
And hopefully some grants will come through.
That would be wonderful, yeah.
Well, I think it's crucial because even though there's $7 million, aside from the referendum, we have other drainage issues that are going to come up within the town of Bristol. This is a multimillion-dollar project, so that's why it is crucial that we get other funds other than what's appropriated.
And another important point with this, too, is that this is not just this area. This is just, this is the capture of water from a multitude of areas. So dealing with this is not just up through Garfield and Charles and Cole and Richmond and all of that. Obviously, they're affected immensely, but so will other areas because the flow will be better, it won't box up, and ultimately we'll be in a better place. Councilman Stewart, this was your agenda item. I would say that maybe we can ask for your advice. What is a next good update for this council?
I was thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of six months, so we can bring it back to maybe in the summer.
If we were to push it out six months, what should be our expectation in six months? Should we have all easements at that point in time?
I think we'll, I would like to set a goal of having them all by that time. And I think we'll have the, probably have the permits.
We'll have the permit. We'll have been able to incorporate the comments from DEM into the design if necessary.
And we'll have the 90% plans at that point, too.
Yes.
So you'll be looking at close to 90% plans. Again, the target will be all of the easements, I mean with the caveat that it depended, obviously, on the negotiations, and then permits. And those will be good goals to hit for...
Well, the easements and permits was discussed back in September and that's what's keeping the timeline appropriated. As far as the budget, the monies that are attached to the two phases are crucial for our capital budget discussion and that was promised also. If there is some setbacks with easements, I'm just bringing it up that that's why we have these every now and then, to keep that timeline and the discussions that's supposed to be accountable for, so.
You want to go out three months? I mean, it's just an update and it's an important update. Your call, sir.
If it's three months after the budget, maybe we'll know where we stand a little more, or, I think at that juncture, six months, three months, it's going to be the same answer.
So I say that let's follow the suggestion of the Community Development Director?
Could I just ask a quick question, Diane? On the easements, with the two phases of the first phase, of the second phase, do the easements sort of follow along? I mean, are they almost pretty clean and simple for the southern part of them?
Well, right, and so, and just going over that with Nicole earlier, our goal is to get all of the easements for the entire 3,000 line of...
Right, 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 right. But I mean, are both the people on board who are in that phase, that first phase of it, so you would, so that, so more the issue is with people upstream, so that works out?
But just to be clear, we have all the easements, everyone's signed on, it's just...
No, no one's signed on?
They've all been met with, they're all aware of the project, and how, they are aware of how we would like to proceed, where we compensate them for the restoration. We now have to sit down with them and negotiate that amount of compensation.
The compensation?
Right, so they won't, they haven't signed the easements because we haven't gotten to agreement on the compensation piece yet for each property owner.
I just want to be clear that everyone has been met, though.
Everyone has been met and some won't.
That was well-known and we don't care.
Because you said a couple of them are not in agreement with you, though. Several of them are, just waiting for the finalization kind of thing?
So let's follow that. If you're amenable, maybe we...
Make a motion to continue this in six months, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, so our first meeting in June would be...
Well, second the motion, July?
July 5th? July 5th.
We were supposed to keep that meeting quick.
So the motion was to continue this to July 5th and second it? Any other discussion?
Right, I mean, so right after, right after the holidays.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is Item I-1. This is correspondence from Sarah Chergan. On behalf of Russ Smith, Chairman of the Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District, requests council support of the program.
Diane, this agenda item about the Eastern RI Conservation District, could you maybe give us a little bit more clarity on it? Do you mind?
No. So this request, I think, comes annually from this organization to support their programming through some funding. I think if you want to just refer it to me, we can look at it with the department's budget. In the past, we've used them for some projects. We sort of call them for technical assistance as we need them and they are a good group to, you know, look at projects. They have engineering and conservation-minded consultants. But I think as far as the request for the budget, I would say just, you could just refer it to me and I'll consider it with the department's budget application. I don't think there's any need for any, you know, commitment at this point in time.
Perfect.
Diane, I was just, I was confused by this because that's what I thought it was when I first read it. I was like, oh, they're looking for money. But then it says dollars obligated to towns, dollars paid to towns. And I'm not sure if that meant like through grants, like, there's no way they'd be asking us for like $42,000.
$42,000.
Right, that's what I was confused about.
And then when it says dollars paid to the towns, does it mean dollars paid from the towns? But I don't think, I don't think they've been on our list of, we've not funded these, this group in a long time, so...
No, and I thought it was sort of services provided, like the value of services provided.
Like in kind? I mean, could you clarify? Because it totally confused me, like, as to what they're actually saying here.
Right, right.
Maybe you could just find, clarify it?
I'll clarify that and like I said, when I, when, you know, I'll come back with stuff. I went right to the bottom line where it said we're looking for funding support.
That's right, yeah. I'll make a motion to refer this to Diane Williamson.
Okay, thank you.
For further study.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is corresponds from Lindsay Ayers and Michelle Martins from the Bodacious B of the Bristol Warren Education Foundation. They're requesting council support of their ninth annual event to be held on March 11th.
Welcome again. We're looking forward to being out in the second round, as we always are.
I hope you do better this year.
Whoever's not selling can't buy us that ramen.
That's right, yeah, I like that.
So I'm here tonight asking for the council and the town of Bristol's continued support. I am the co-chair of the Bodacious B. It is March 11th this year. It's a Saturday, it starts at 5:30 at Roger Williams University. Last year, we were able to raise over $55,000 that night with your help. That was, that's the net that we were able to raise. And with that, we were able to fund $63,000 to Bristol Warren Regional School District in grants.
Fantastic, congratulations.
Thank you. So we would hope that you could support us once again by possibly doing a sponsorship. Last year, you chose to do a silver sponsorship, which was $1,000. It was, gave a team, table of eight, to be part of the event. So if you can, if you're able to do that, that would be great.
Is the silver the same this year?
Yes.
Okay.
We didn't change anything.
I'll make a motion that we contribute the $1,000 for the silver team sponsor on behalf of the council. Would that come out of the contingency? And I must say that thank you and the foundation for this successful event. This will be the first year I cannot attend. I already, I will be away. But Andy, their comment is, they're trying to allude that, you know, this is a fundraiser, so we do want to donate, so if you are there and want to represent me, you put up that paddle. They want the easy way out.
Yeah, the president failed spectacularly in the past.
I thought I was going to spell this year. I thought you were going to be on the team.
I do want to just acknowledge and thank you, Michelle, and all the others that work so hard to put on this event, and then also just the commitment throughout the year to provide the resources to our school system that are so needed to supplement the funding they get normally. So thank you, Michelle, and to your family, and Josh for your support being here tonight.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention we're doing things a little differently this year. We're having an honorary guest, which is being chosen by the class of 2017, the graduating class. They're picking their star educators. So we wanted to make it the school base their own kind of acknowledgement.
And Michelle, it's a theme, there's a theme?
Yes, be a star. So red carpet, yes.
All right, great.
You can take that however you'd like, be a star. Yes.
Looking forward to it.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Is there any other discussion?
Just that we'll miss you, Councilman Stewart. Usually you get to, usually...
We might be out in the first round, huh?
You usually save us, you usually save us. I know Mary and Ethan again.
It's not me.
Hopefully Andy come to a rescue. We're going to try to make a couple rounds, you know, our spelling. We're getting there.
You're getting there.
Maybe I can Skype with the paddle.
We can do that.
Michelle, just a quick 30-second commercial for you.
Yes.
If you're interested in going to the B, how would you do that?
You can go to the Bristol Warren Education Foundation website, BWEF, I got to make sure, foundation.org.
And you can buy tickets there?
And you can buy tickets right there. It brings you to the bidding for good site.
Okay.
So tickets individually are $50 or we have different levels of sponsorships and you can also buy a team, table, so. I appreciate everyone's support. Last year, we were able to have 420 people present, so we hope to have 425 this year.
It was a very well-run event.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the town councils, Item I-3. This is correspondence from Jeffrey Willis, the Deputy Director of Coastal Resources Management Council regarding the, his officers' agreement to provide a one-year interim approval of the town's harbor management plan. I believe it's just informational.
Motion to receive and file?
Second. There's a motion and a second to receive and file. A quick question. Why do we need a, is this an extension?
It is, it's an interim approval, so the current plan will expire in February and we are working on it, the Harbor Commission is working on the plan, but we don't expect it will be done by February, so we've asked for a one-year interim approval to keep that current plan approved while we get the date prepared.
Okay, great. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is from the Director of Community Development requesting the opportunity to have an executive session. I'm assuming the council would like to do that at the conclusion of the public agenda.
Yes.
The next item is Item J-1. This is continued from December 14th. It has to do with Bid Number 851, the interior renovations Bristol Town Hall.
Well, as we know, the bids came in and they were a little bit higher than budgeted for, so again, we have our lead person on the project, which is our building official, and our hope, obviously with council approval, would be to proceed in a phased approach. We've narrowed down our priorities and we're, we plan on, would like to make the improvements here in-house, meaning we'll manage the project, the building official will manage the projects. Obviously, we'll put out to bid the different phases, such as a rooftop unit, the climate control system in the vault, and those are our two priorities to get done before the summer, the warmer months come in. So you'll be, you'll be, hopefully, if the council will approve that concept on moving forward, we like to proceed and I know Richard is out there, he's already doing his due diligence with specifications and he's been looking at our architect's plans for the building. But we feel as if we can save the town a significant amount of money and minimize the disruption to the town hall as far as closing it, we can still function here while we're going through the improvements. But, Richard, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, like Steve said, you're not going to phase it. We're going to phase it. We identified the main concerns, that would definitely be the climate control of the vault. Currently, there's nothing, there's no operable system working in there now. So we're working on that, we're studying that. I've got some bids coming in and hope to have something to report to you soon.
Richard, is there any way we could have a priority, like a priority breakdown of the phased work of like what number one priority? Because I thought the HVAC system was, is that part of the HVAC system?
Well, we're going to, we're going to separate it. We're going to have the climate control and humidity control of the vault, which is critical for the records.
Right.
And then the other priority that we identified was climate control for the town hall itself. As you know, the AC was not working properly in the summer. Other than that, well, I know, I know that it was brought up in discussions that we have some electrical issues and some technology issues that we also wanted to address.
So could we have a list of those breakdowns and the priorities and then a timeline around those? It'd be great just to see how you guys are, what your thinking is and how it's going to affect cost. That'd be great, thank you.
So, I mean, I think it's good to do that, but if you were going to do, say you had electrical issues and you're going to be up on the roof doing like HVAC, you'd have to kind of, would you be, would you have to do both of those sort of at the same time? Like if you're going to be ripping stuff, you know, like heating system apart or whatever?
If I may, yeah, we are going to have a project list to present periodically, but I can tell you from now to June, we like to take care of the vault, which we don't have heat in there right now, so town clerk is actually doing the best he can to keep it above freezing. So that's a priority, we need to get that done. The rooftop unit, we're going to start with a rooftop unit to put on the existing curbing. We have, we're going to have the specifications, we'll make sure they're rebate-eligible. And the other thing would just be some minor repairs, such as some tiling and so forth that just really just needs to get done now. We'll provide the documentation as to what our plan is between now and June, and then later on in the spring, we'll provide you what we're planning on doing in the fall. But again, any purchase, large purchase, obviously, is going to go out to bid and unless it's an incidental repair, it will go before the council. But to answer your question about the electrical system, we're going to do that per circuit. We're going to have an electrician come in. So obviously, when we do the air conditioning units, if the circuit isn't appropriate for the unit, then obviously we'll run a new circuit to it and do whatever we need to do and take out the old. What we're learning is over the years, additions and additional circuits were put in, but the old stuff was left behind. So as we go along, we're going to clean it up in a systematic approach, one section of the building at a time, so that it's less disruptive to our operations here. I think that's one of the keys in it. We strongly believe it's going to be a lot cheaper than one, one project all at once with one contractor handling it. We have the expertise in town and there's no doubt, we think we can, we can, we can do it cheaper and less disruptive.
I know it was very expensive, but so when you say the air, the roof, you're talking about HVAC system, basically?
The air conditioner on the roof, right. There's one, there's a rooftop unit that needs to be replaced.
So does the heat work fine, it's just the air conditioning that's the problem?
The heat, well, we have to do a little bit more of a survey and look at the engineering, the architect's plans, but there may be some changes. We may need a plumber to come in and, you know, create a different zone and so forth, but we'll, we'll get to it. We're going to do it right, we're going to take our time, we're going to learn the building, how we should learn it, and, you know, that's, that's our plan, but we're going to, we're going to keep you posted.
To council vice chair's point, is actually part of our building committee specifically for the renovations at the town hall, that discussion came up a lot of times and we all agreed that there needs to be a clear plan, but then phase it out like we've been talking about on a few things. And make sure that step one and step seven don't counteract and do something that you have to go back and do again. As Steve has already said, the rooftop HVAC system is actually just air conditioning, there's no heat that comes out of there right now, but the initial idea was to do a lot more and it seemed to be much more expensive, but we want to make sure we can take advantage of the rebates, we take advantage of efficiencies and make sure that we're not, we're spending the least amount of money and getting what we need, so.
So just for clarity, we're going to disregard these bids and where the town is going to act as a subcontractor?
Yeah, that's our intent.
Well put, sir.
So do we have to reject the bids then?
Yes, yeah, you have to formally reject it.
And before we do that, the chairman and the vice chairman, about the clarity, a discussion, Mr. Administrator, before you came on about RFPs and the department heads, we had this conversation going forward. For the transparency and for no overruns, we need to communicate, this council has to be informed of every line item that you said that you were going to...
to be informed of every line item that you said that you were gonna provide for priorities going forward. So I appreciate having a definitive plan of just the preliminary stages and what's cost affected for that. And then when we put the big items and going forward, we can have a report and be communicated with, so.
That's definitely our intention.
Okay, thank you. So make a motion that we reject the, the bids provided for bid 851 for the interior renovations that were provided to this council.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have one other question. Yeah. Diane, Julie, actually. Julie, I just had a question in regards to capital project funding for this. So we don't want any surprises. We're coming up on budget. Is there, there is some allocated, put aside for this particular, or we, or do we know where there's money for this?
Yes. So we had not enough to do what we, what the bids came back with, but we did have some funding set aside.
Okay, great.
So we're gonna use those funds. It's part of the $1.6 million bond issued that we have slots for different projects, so we're gonna utilize that.
Okay, great. I'm gonna check with...
Any other? Agreed. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item J two. This is correspondence regarding A&R Marine Corp., who are requesting special appropriation for the Prudence Dock Repair.
Who would like to inform us? I understand there was a meeting recently with some discussion in regards to this. Mr. Administrator, did you wanna bring us speed on this?
I can. We've been, we've been communicating with A&R Marine, who we currently have a lease with for the Prudence Island Dock. We have also been in touch with our counterparts in Portsmouth, and we're trying to come up with some type of a funding solution to make the much-needed repairs to the Prudence Island Back in 2013, there was a report, and there was an architect's plan to make those much-needed improvements. The concern is the ramp, the ramp that services the ferry. It's owned by the town of Bristol. We did sign a lease with A&R Marine some time ago, stating that we would share in the course of any repairs. So we've been talking with management there, also the town of Portsmouth, and we're just trying to come up with a reasonable agreement to make the minimum amount of repairs at this time, so that we won't interrupt service to the commuters. But I'm hoping by next council meeting, the 25th, we'll have some figures to present to you. The other thing I would add is, Kevin, do you have anything you want to add? I know, you're gonna hear this quite often. I have a point person for the different projects, and the point person with the Prudence Island Dock is our Highway Department Director.
Yeah, just a quick roll-up to make sure that town administrator talked about discussions with A&R Marine as it affects their operations. One of the things to keep in mind, this is the time of year to do construction on their end of the dock because of, you know, the low volume that they have. And it makes sense for them to do that with the temporary displacement of operations. So that's one of the reasons it's kind of, trying to get this thing rolling forward. It's always been an issue. No secrets about that. Trying to be the whole thing. Our plans for the remainder of the repairs on the Prudence Ferry Dock for the towns, from the towns' perspective, are at 90% design. And I asked the engineers just kind of hold on that until we figured out the funding source for that, before we went to the final step of, you know, creating the construction documents for that. We're very close at the 90% phase. We have engineers' estimates for our end of that. And it dovetails what A&R is trying to do on the west end. We gotta make sure everything's coordinated and synchronized, and that we all do something that makes sense for the whole build-out project, which is where we are today. But as the town administrator mentioned, that, you know, the negotiations relative to funding to get that west wall and the ramp structure completed as soon as possible are ongoing, and we are hoping that we can make that happen shortly, so that A&R's operation will be minimally impacted. And obviously, during this time of the year is the time to do it. So that's where we are. And then once that gets done and we work through the capital budget planning piece, you know, then we'll have to look at the funding for our end of the dock repairs, the north wall, and the remainder of the west wall. It is our responsibility.
Kevin, I just had an antiquating question. Oh, sorry. Is the, I notice when I walk out, I notice there's holes, and they're covered, and they're covered. Is the, is the walls, the wall repair contingent on getting those holes filled in?
Yeah, that's all part of the final design.
Okay. I just didn't know if they could be filled in, or...
Filling them in is not gonna, it'll never solve the problem, because you have seawater that's undermining through the wall underneath the actual dock itself, and that's the problem. We need to stop that.
Okay.
You know, the design will take care of that. You know, short order, the design is gonna put new sheet piling on the exterior of the existing sheet piling, but then you've gotta tie back those walls. And I don't wanna get into the particulars of it, but it is a detailed process to make sure that we have a longstanding solution and not a temporary Band-Aid. Right now, we've made some temporary repairs to that area that you mentioned, councilman. But as I've noted before, it is just a Band-Aid, and it will get us X amount of time before, you know, we need to address it again. And so if we go forward, that's, hopefully, answers your question.
You did. I'm just, wanna minimize injury. You know what I mean? I don't want more claims.
You know, I will tell you, and I've said this probably the first time I sat down with a new town administrator, that that is the one thing that keeps me awake at night, is that and all. Okay? So, I mean, I just, we need to really take a look at that. We've been able to keep up with the short-term repairs, but we really need a long-term construction solution.
Well, it's a liability issue down there. I mean, the whole place is just...
Absolutely.
But can I, oh, go ahead. I just had a quick question when you're done. Yeah, go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, I think, you know, just to start, that the Prudence Island Ferry is a key piece to our waterfront. You know, I think the social contribution to the town of Bristol is significant. You know, as Bristol is defined on the waterfront, moved inland, and Portsmouth was mainly an agrarian sort of community, it was a natural location for the ferry for generations. And I think it is a key part to our community here. With that said, I think that the current relationship with the ferry that the town has and with the town of Portsmouth, the basis of it was, I think, hastily formed based on an immediate transition and a need to provide a lifeline of service. And I think that that current agreement, in some senses, discounts Bristol's contribution and increases the impact economically and also to the downtown community. And I think that as we consider repairs, that are no doubt an emergency to the west end, safety-wise and infrastructure-wise, on a piece of property that is owned by the town of Bristol. I do think that that discussion needs to be in the context of really a long-term intent for generations to come, to keep the ferry here. And I don't think that, as we discuss these things in pieces, I'm afraid that we'll get off track from really addressing the bigger problem, which is millions of dollars of funding which is necessary. And I think that we need to have a conversation with the ferry operator, A&R, the town of Portsmouth, which this, in essence, is their infrastructure on our property, so that the Bristol taxpayers aren't paying the brunt for the Portsmouth residents. So I think it can be done, but I think it needs to be done in a fair manner amongst the three parties.
Well, I had just a general question, and that is, the way this is worded, you know, that is a request for special appropriation for the Prudence Ferry Dock repair. Is, have they, and we're trying to work out an agreement, but did they come in with a particular number and say, we need to get this done, and it says you're to pay half? Is that how this came to be?
I'm gonna let the town administrator...
I'll explain what happened. They were gonna propose a revised repair. It differed from the par engineering improvement that was, that was designed back in 2013. The amended repair was significantly cheaper, and it, it still provided the same function. So yesterday, the engineer, after further review, determined that the pylons could not be driven in close enough to the dock. So it was a little bit of a stall yesterday. But we were somewhat prepared to provide a negotiated agreement to bring to the council tonight. Again, as the director said, there is a little bit of exigency here on getting the repairs done. So that's why it's on the council docket. They were supposed to provide an engineered stamped plan tonight. However, at the last minute, the engineer said it just, it just can't be done. So I think we're back to the par engineering's design, which is almost twice as much as the redesigned plan.
I actually have a suggestion, Mr. Chairman. I would suggest that you vote on a motion to add this matter to executive session for discussion purposes only.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second to put this into executive session for discussion purposes Yes, we can allow that discussion if you want to come up to the podium.
Yeah, my name is Stephen Antaya. I'm the president of A&R Marine, and of course, we operate the ferry out of Church Street Dock.
Welcome. That was me.
Welcome.
It's the way the speakers work. It sounds like it's behind you, but it's actually not. I know. We're gonna change that. Of course, part of the renovations.
We have a lease with the town of Bristol, and I brought, sent a letter to the town requesting a special funding to fix this one phase of the dock. As, you know, Kevin expressed, it's in really tough shape right now. And what we wanna do is, we did have an original, we had a new plan that was gonna be a lot cheaper. But again, you know, as the town administrator explained, we couldn't get a stamp for it in a timely manner without significant changes. So we've gone back to the original par plan, which calls for sheet pile across the front, and then tiebacks for that sheet pile, and then rebuilding the face, a new concrete cap. And that will allow us to install a gallows and a ramp system that we've already built. So we've spent about $200,000 on that gallows and ramp system, but we just don't have anything to put it on. So this improvement to the dock, you know, will allow us to install that ramp, and it will be a long-term fix in line with the par plan, you know, the much larger plan. And I appreciate Councilman Tiska's comments. Yes, there has to be some discussions about, you know, where in this for the long run? We, the ferry's been operating out of there for 100 years. We'd like to see it operating out of there for another 100 years. It's a significant benefit to the town. I mean, on a, on a summer weekend, you know, we'll bring in 900 people. I mean, we take six runs, we can carry 150 people a run, you know. So, I mean, we're bringing a lot of traffic. We're, we're busing a lot of people into this town. They're buying a lot of, you know, they're buying in the stores, they're eating in the restaurants, they're, you know, contributing a lot of funding to the town. So it's a significant, when you look at the numbers, you know, the numbers on paper of the dock and the parking and all that, you know, you still have to consider the additional value that it brings into the town. So anyway, timing's important because of the deteriorating nature of the, of the facility right now. There are huge holes under there. It keeps me up at night, too, just like Kevin. You know, it's in tough shape. So we have a contractor that provided an estimate based on the par engineering plan. It's an engineering estimate at about $210,000. It's more than the, than the other plan, the modified plan that we thought, you know, we might be able to get away with. But this is a stamped, engineered, approved plan for, you know, approximately 210. My, my proposal was, of course, A&R has a vested interest in it, we're the operator. The town of Bristol has a vested interest in it. You know, you own it, and it's part of your waterfront, and it brings a big benefit into the town. The town of Portsmouth has an interest in it. We're carrying their residents. We're carrying a lot of tourists, you know, but it is a lifeline service. We provide that, you know, PUC-regulated lifeline service. So my idea was to split it three ways, you know. A&R, we're willing to put up 70, and hopefully, the town of Bristol and the town of Portsmouth. Timing's critical. You know, that number's gonna move. I, I understand from the town administrator that, I guess, you have to send it out to bid? Is that a, is that a requirement, or...
If there are town funds from Bristol and Portsmouth involved, that would be required.
Yep.
Even if it's an emergency?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Well, there are emergency, I'm sorry, there are emergency provisions which each town could implement if it truly is, but like, for instance, in Bristol, that would require getting three estimates.
Well, the timing is critical. You know, I mean, you see the condition of the dock. I mean, I was hoping to be able to, you know, shut it down within, you know, in January, you know, as soon as possible, so that we can get that work done, and we can get that new ramp on there, and we can all, you know, sleep.
Can this be done in the winter? Can this kind of work be done in January, February?
It's perfect timing, yeah.
I mean, I know it's not busy, but I mean, is it okay, the conditions?
Yeah, no problem. The, well, the contractor that we're working with, whether or not it would be the one that's chosen, can, can temp the whole thing and work. You know, they'll have to do that for carrying the...
And how long will it take to...
About a month, maybe, you know, plus or minus a week.
You really have to have this done by April?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we get into the busy season.
Before May, by the end of May, yeah.
And, and it's not so much that. I mean, you know, we...
Just one, one sec. One sec. Go ahead.
Yeah, we are working well with A&R, I would say. The negotiation, the communication's excellent, also with the town of Portsmouth. However, as much as I wanna get something done on it, and I'm conscious, as the director stated, it is, it is a concern, to rush it in a day or two, it's ill-advised. I think we should wait until the 25th, and we'll talk some more. It's still the winter. We can advertise, and in the February meeting, you can open up the bids if that's what the council so chooses. But it's still the winter when you can break ground and make the, make the improvements. But to rush tonight, I think we just opened up the communications, maybe, what, a week ago, we started talking. So I think we've gained a lot of headway. We're having some good dialogue, and there's a commitment there, there's no question. But I think we need three more weeks to really put something solid together, have Kevin really look at the plans again, and we'll come back on the 25th with some type of a proposal.
Andy?
I'd just like to take the opportunity, Mr. Antaya. The current lease talks about these repairs to the west wall, along with concurrently, the repairs to the north side of the wall, and a par engineering study done in 2013. That report specifically in that scope, that entire scope, was referred to in the lease as something that will be shared, the cost will be shared mutually between Bristol and A&R. And my question to you tonight is, you know, we're talking about the west end solely in sharing in those costs. Is A&R prepared and also willing to share in the same manner the significant costs needed, the repairs needed on the north end of the wall, as determined in the lease?
Yeah, from the very beginning, you know, I've made my position on that very clear, Councilman Tiska. We had discussions with Diane and Mr. Osillo and the previous town administrator when we were negotiating the lease. And yes, we wanna participate. We, again, we have a vested interest in it. We wanna make sure, you know, that's not just the causeway going to, you know, a nice ramp and west end, you know, so that, that north side does have to be done. We also have A&R Marine Construction, and we're building capacity with that company. And we were hoping, and we made, we discussed it again when we were signing the lease two years ago, that my intent was to use the capacity of that company to, to, to have basically an open book and be able to facilitate, you know, with the town's help, buying the materials, and then with A&R Marine's construction, providing the labor, and getting the work done at a, at a cost plus a very... at a cost plus a very small margin and it would be a completely open book with the town of Bristol and it would be an economical way to do it. You know, so if it's, I guess, my intent was to put labor into it, you know, and that would be our participation, our funding.
So that may be tricky, the way things are currently structured because of the need to go out to bid, and I'm wondering if your intent to put in labor for further improvements is, I agree in the value that could be added and the savings that could be had for both parties, and so I guess I'm wondering if a mechanism to be able to do that would be to revisit these, those specific terms of the lease and work out an amendment to the existing lease and define in these conversations what that role will be for the town so that we can plan financially, knowing what your contribution will be in years to come. So my question to you is, are you willing to sit down and have reasonable renegotiations to amend the existing lease so that the funding can be better defined going forward so we're not making these decisions last minute like we are right now?
Yeah, we knew going into the lease that we would need definition on what share means, you know, when we're talking about sharing cost. So, I mean, we have a five-year lease now, there's a couple of years left, we've got an option to renew it. I can't tell you right now whether what I'm going to amend or agree to amend, other than what I've already said, that we're willing to contribute and share, you know, in the rebuilding of that dock so it's safe and usable, you know. Do you have any specific ideas about what terms and conditions you would like?
I wanted to get your, I guess, input on your feelings about revisiting some of these specifics, which I think are unclear now, which we'd like to clarify in the future.
Like I said, we want to be there for another 100 years. I want my kids to be around the facility so I'm more than willing to negotiate.
So what I hear then is a mutual, that we're all comfortable sitting at the table coming up with a game plan that works for everyone. So we definitely, we have this as executive session, we'll be talking about this this evening. Our next step here is we would need specifics that this council could look at and say yes or no to, and that obviously would be appropriate at our next meeting, which is January 25th. As the administrator always said, if we get to a place, and it seems like we would, to a positive place we can take the next step to, then those things need to go out to bid, it's a requirement, and those would be opened at our February meeting. So we can make sure that we stay on target with all of those things, but we have to go through those processes by our own ordinance and laws, so. But we will make sure we continue with this and it sounds like we're all on top of this, this is top of mind. So we have a motion and a second to put this into executive session for discussion purposes only. Is there any other discussion on this before we do that? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So I know that we'll all be talking very soon on this and specifically this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, item K1, this is the periodic report provided by Alan Klepper, Bristol County Water Authority.
Motion to receive and file. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Anybody in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's not that late.
The next item is another executive session, which will be taking up at the conclusion of the public agenda, and now we have the individual council member, agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
This has been a quick meeting, so I'm going to make a couple of quick comments. If you haven't been to Blythewold over the Christmas season, you probably missed it this year, but man, put it on your calendar for next year. It is absolutely spectacular and their representation of just so many beautiful places that we have. We are just truly fortunate with what we have surrounding us, and I think we're so fortunate that we forget how fortunate that we are. When you look around for the lighting and see 1,000, 2,000, 3,000 people in the streets and what a beautiful job DPW does, making downtown look beautiful, and they're not alone. I mean, there's so many people that get us there. Take a moment and visit, whether it's Linden Place, I went to Blythewold, walking around that outside area with all the trees lit up. They had, a couple of days before Christmas, they had smores and it was free. You just go over with the kids and make a smores out in the backyard at one of the fire pits. It's phenomenal. So put it on your calendar for next year, support our local organizations, including all, but specifically Blythewold because I was there, but take an opportunity to go there. I wanted to make sure that 2017 is the year that we make sure that everybody knows some of the great things that are going on, and I'm not talking about blowing our own horn. I'm talking about opportunities for the public. One of those recently was celebrated, which is this council okayed dollars to purchase the land to the right of Kane's Way. What I'm talking about is the open space that now connects 136 all the way down to 114. It is open space, the Conservation Commission did a phenomenal amount of work, Ed Tanner and Diane Williamson did a phenomenal amount of work. I want to go back to the Conservation Commission again because there was, you know, Tony Martini and all, took a lot of time and effort. If you go over there tomorrow, please do it, go over there tomorrow, there's maps out there, there's blue marks on the trees, where to go, it might be a little bit mushy right now, maybe wait for a week, but go out there in a couple of weeks and it is absolutely spectacular, it's beautiful and it's yours. And that was my point, is that there are so many things out there, we're going to refocus on some opportunities for all of us. It's free, bring your dog in, take whatever your dog drops and bring it out, but bring your dog in, bring your family in, bring your kids in, take a walk down there. That's going to continue to get improved, but improved in a very organic way, so we'll make sure that tree limbs are cleaned out. In fact, it was actually mentioned by the Conservation Commission, if you're walking through there and you see a branch in the way, throw it in the woods. It's okay, you know, clear it out for the next person to go through. If you see a piece of trash, even if it's not yours, pick it up, bring it out, because that belongs to you and it belongs to me, belongs to all of us. So take an opportunity, go down there. We are also going to take more opportunities to share those other things, those open spaces. We mentioned the Prudence Island Ferry Dock, that belongs to the people of Bristol, that waterfront, that Azovito property that has been a contentious conversation about what are we doing with the building, that belongs to the people of Bristol. So we're going to keep focusing on those things and remind everyone of what a wonderful community we live in and that's yours to use. Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney?
We all like cost savings and I'd like to just highlight one of the great cost savings and really it comes down to some team members here. We have Diane, Julie, Kevin and Walter and they're doing a great job in regards to the LED update and I just wanted to say that thank you very much, you guys, because you know how to save the tax sellers. And what I mean by that is we'll be retrofitting the municipal buildings, that would be Byfield Rentals, Police Department, DPW Facility and the Rogers Free Library. So with that, the process would be that the energy conservation would come in and they would convert the buildings at no cost out of our pocket to LED and long and the short of it, for example, the police department, brace yourself, chief, ready for this savings? Steve, you like this? That the police would get converted over to LED lighting, there would be a one-year and four-month payback and then the savings would be $20,000. So that's huge. I mean, that's what we're talking about at the end of the day, about efficiencies and spending our money correctly. And also, I know Walter has a good relationship with Jerry Drumel, the lead energy efficiency rep, and long and the short of it, he was saying, we were selected as one of the two communities that applied for incentives given by National Grid and if the incentives go up in January, correct me if I'm wrong, Walter, we would get those incentives, so thank you, you guys, I really appreciate you guys expanding the LED program and, again, providing taxpayers more savings, that's what we want to do. So thank you very much. And I also just wanted to point out, I was on my way back from a jog from Mount Hope Farm and there was a fire on State Street and I was coming down State Street and I saw Bristol Fire Department down there, but I also saw Warren was involved, I saw trucks from Portsmouth and anyway, long and the short of it, nobody was hurt, but it was great to see all the communities working together to help resolve that. So, chief, that's great, great job. And I just want to wish everybody a happy new year and I hope it's a great one for all of you. Have a good night.
Mr. Tiska?
Thank you, Lou. So I saw the first sign of spring today and that came in the mailbox, that was a bill for mooring permits from a harbor master. So.
Ah, the call of the mooring bird.
Yeah, so thank you, Greg, for that. I'd like to make myself available to any business owner out there in the next couple of weeks. Dr. Mario Andre, our superintendent, has been working hard to, with our Economic Development Commission, to establish, maintain and build relationships with, between the business community and the high school with his internship program. So this program has been, over the last several months, strategized and worked on and now it's the time when they'll be placing students in businesses. Many of you might have heard some of the successes from last year, but it's a great opportunity for young people to not necessarily get the skills in these businesses, but to have a connection and a mentor within the community and a business owner. So if you're a business owner and you want to do your part to the community and get involved, please reach out, I guess, to myself and I can direct you from there. Also, I just want to commend Principal Vance about his leadership to consider reinvigorating the boat building program, the Young Mariners Program at the middle school, who's been absent for a couple of years, and also commend Dr. Dibiasi, who's considering tying in a program at the high school. So this is, I think, a great way for young people to have the opportunity to work with their hands, understand and develop skills that can put them to work and give them a career and build a family here in town. So this is a program which I think is important. I've learned that the last time a young person reads a ruler in our school system is fifth grade, so I'd like to make that 12th grade so that that's a skill that all of our young people here in town have. So it's a modest goal, but I very much look forward to working with our school system to provide that outlet. With that, happy new year.
Happy new year.
Thank you.
Ms. Perella?
Well, I don't really have anything except to wish everyone a very happy and healthy new year, so pretty simple today. And Andy, is that in inches or in metrics?
Well, that's another thing, but I think if you vote, most businesses in town, many of them are metric. And I think the first, I think, obstacle is to get young people to realize that you don't read a ruler by saying, it's the second little line after the big line. So once we get there, then we can go from standard to metric.
Now, if I read a ruler that way, is that, okay, all right.
Mr. Stewart?
Well, we did reach the 500 signatures for the energy challenge. Going forward, the regional director will be meeting with Diane to formulate the logistics on the grant and other things that are attached to that. So just like to thank everybody, all the residents, everyone in this room for ascertaining that goal, so I just appreciate it, along with this council and the department heads. Topic of spring is not yet, Councilman Tiska, because it's still the winter and we're experiencing some days where the temperatures are high and then we're going to be experiencing some freezing temperatures along the coast, that's where Rhode Island's positioned, and we know that with that recipe comes potholes and the infrastructure. We've been on top of this for the longest time and the reason why I'm bringing it up is the new administration coming in, we just had a meeting with myself, the administrator and Director McBride to go over the capital plan for this 2017 road plan to keep it going. I know we've been discussing it very much along with our colleagues to keep that program going because the infrastructure is very important and the amount of roads that cover all of Bristol to, you know, invite visitors and for our businesses to flourish have to be maintained and being maintained appropriately and a prudent way because it costs so much money, they're all allocated along with the director through the engineering firm and a lot of our streets are redlined. So I say this time and time again, we want to do everyone's road in one year, but it's not going to happen. Certainly, anyone who has any questions, because it has been raised, why hasn't it been vocally, publicly about the plan, anyone is, can come to the administration or director to see what the plan entails, because that can be ever-changing with the infrastructure alone, if there are any cave-ins with the drainage that's included with it, with the aging piping that's included with it. So we just have to be cognizant of that approach without making commitments every year. So we just ask the patience and understanding of the residents of the town of Bristol that we are addressing this and this year is just going to be another challenge because along with the infrastructure, we just previously said, the drainage, the school litigation. So that's why this capital project meeting coming up, I know in a modest way, we have to keep the roads continuously worked on along with the drainage, because little by little, because by doing nothing won't serve our town any good financially, economically and for the service of those roads that our residents strive on for the taxes that they pay. So with that, thank you, Mike Davis, everyone who attended tonight, everyone tuning in at home, and I look forward to a prosperous 2017 with the town of Bristol and this administration.
And our chief.
Town administrator.
And Archie Manzah, Sergeant. I get two reprieves a year, don't I?
Town administrator, agenda items.
I've been on the whole time, good thing I didn't say anything, I wasn't supposed I just want to first recognize the fire department. Councilman Sweeney did state, under the leadership of Fire Chief DeMello, they did a really good job last Tuesday, a structural fire came in on State Street and I just felt compelled to talk about it because it's great when everything comes together. One of our highway foremen, Jim Sylvester, actually took Engine 2 while he was working, thank you director for allowing that. He responded to the scene. Two firemen from another company, Adam Madiris and Alex Lunter, they were assisted by James Murrah Jr., who's actually a Mount Hope High School student in the junior firefighter program, another new program. I think he's actually at least third generation fireman from Engine 2. His father is also James. But my point is, if the system works, you know, I keep saying, we got to protect our small fire stations, you know, it's such an asset to us and it's important that we keep going down that road and support them, they did a really good job. By the time I got there, I hate to admit it, the Red Cross was a minute or two after me, but everything was all wrapped up, the property owner was on scene, people were safe, they had direction, so it was, it really, really was a remarkable effort. The only other thing I have is tomorrow, the highway department's going to be sweeping Wood Street and again, it's nice to see us using our equipment. We did get a winter sweeper and it's been posted and the director assured me that as soon as, as soon as it's done being swept, the signs will be pulled down. I spoke to a couple of the business owners there today, they're happy with it. And I just checked with the chief, make sure that goes smoothly. So other than that, the only other good news I have is that our snow removal budget is very good so far.
Don't speak too soon, tomorrow and Saturday, any Friday and Saturday.
Positive victim of circumstance, right?
Thank you and, yes. Happy new year.
Happy new year.
If I may just add about the roads and whatnot, as many of you see the state signs on Medicom and that's for the turning intersections at Tupelo, Anawambsk, Chestnut and Bayview, that's going to take place by the state, it's just to inform people. And through the chairman, the director and the administration, we did meet with the state and had a meeting of a temporary turning lane, a center turning lane that we're discussing as promised, to see the potential impact of, if that is feasible, on Medicom to have three lanes when that project gets incorporated along that same timetable, so that way we can do a trial run to see if the measurements are going to be regulated in that sense to have a center turning lane on Medicom Avenue, so.
Thank you.
Now, a motion would be in order to convee into executive session pursuant to 4246-5A2 regarding potential litigation on lico lices and 425, 4246-5A5 with regard to leases, the Azovito property and for discussion purposes only, the A&R lease.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good night, everyone. Thank you. Thank you.